Okay, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have with us this morning Jim McHugh, who is going to lead us in the pledge. Jim is a member of VFW Post 121 in Naugah Park in Scranton. Jim served for three and a half years as a Bolson May 3rd Class in the United States Navy from 1970 to 1973, serving his time on the USS aircraft carrier Forrestal during the Vietnam War, and he currently lives in Dunmore, Pennsylvania, and we're happy and proud to have him here today.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Veterans may hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we get started, I just want to thank all of the officials in Dunmore for having us here at the Dunmore Community Center, and I just want to take a second to recognize them. We have Mayor Max Conway, who's doing a really good job here in Dunmore; Council President Janet Breyer, who's with us today in the front row; Councilperson Catherine Mackerel Oven; Councilperson Trip O'Malley; Councilperson Mike Dempsey, Mike is right over there. Thanks, Mike; Councilperson Thomas Hallinan; Councilperson Beth Sangardi; Councilperson Patrick Nibbs-Lotney; the Borough Manager, who does a really nice job, Greg Wolfe; the Tax Collector, Michael Ruddy; Police Chief Sal Marquez; Fire Chief Kristin Naples; and the Community Center Director, who does a really, really great job, Chris Carney. So, thank you for having us here this morning, and we're really happy to be here. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioner's meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the Board on agenda items only. Would anyone like to address the Board on agenda items? Seeing that there is no one, we do have a proclamation that I'd like to read into the record and then ask Mickey Drutschel from our Behavioral Health Office if she'd like to come up and say a few words. This proclamation is declaring the month of September 2025 to be Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I'd like you to say a few words. Whereas suicide is a leading cause of death in the United States and in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, one person dies by suicide every four hours, making it the second leading cause of death for ages 15 through 34, and the fourth leading cause of death for ages 35 to 54. Whereas nearly 5 million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide, and each member of our community is valued and irreplaceable. And talking openly about stress and psychological health builds trust, reduces barriers to care, and enables early intervention. And local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. And whereas the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program works with community stakeholders to assure that each citizen has access to mental health services and mental health crisis intervention to spread the message that help and resources are available. Whereas local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Now therefore, we, Bill Gahan and Chris Turmac, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. And with that, Mickey, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your recognition of September as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. We are really grateful for, you know, you being willing to make a proclamation and to speak on that. As all you all know, suicide is a national public health issue that is complex and multifaceted. According to 2221, dated from the Centers for Disease Control, suicide is the 11th leading cause of death overall in the United States, is the second leading cause of death for individuals aged 10 to 14, and 25 to 34. This year, our program aims to highlight resources and supports for veterans. According to data from the Office of Veterans Affairs, suicide was the 12th leading cause of death for veterans in 2022, but the second leading cause of death for veterans under age 45. Approximately 17 veterans die by suicide every day. Suicide is preventable. Confidential help is available through the National 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Press One, there is a dedicated hotline for veterans. There is a local Veterans Affairs Office. There's a Scranton Veteran Center, which has been a wonderful partner in this effort. There are also local crisis resources at the Scranton Counseling Center. And I implore all of you, as citizens, friends, and family members, that you don't need to have the answers, but be present, let your friends, family, and community members know that you see them, will make time, and are there for them. There's a campaign from SAMSA and the federal government called Be the One, five action steps to assist individuals who are contemplating suicide. Ask. Don't be afraid to ask. If someone is considering suicide, it is a myth that asking them gives them the idea. You are not going to put that idea in their head, it is already there, if that is something that is a risk for that individual. Be present. Practice nonjudgmental listening. Be realistic with the support that you can provide, but simply be there. Keep individuals safe. The more time that you can provide a barrier to somebody in access to lethal means, the better the outcomes. Help people to connect, assisting with trusted supports in the community, or assistance in connecting with trusted family or friends. And follow up. Leave a message. Send a text, card. Whatever way you feel is appropriate, follow up. And those are ways in which you can help, that everyone in the community can help someone who's struggling with suicide. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I do appreciate what you do for us too with our, the County Suicide Prevention Alliance and the help of Jessica Chalick. I mean, that's just good stuff that we do. We meet every other month, and we have about 100, I can say about 150 members. And you know what? It's mainly to keep awareness out there, keep everybody on the same page, what's going on. I do want to mention about the 988 number, that's the National Suicide Hotline.
Yes.
So, you know, anybody that's ever having a crisis, you know, that number is available.
24/7, 365.
Yep. And the veteran suicide, you know, that, I think what brought me, when I was first a Commissioner, I lost a very close friend, Colin O'Rourke. And that was one of the driving forces for me to put together this Suicide Prevention Alliance. And then this is the last year and a half, we lost three veterans that were close to me. So I want to say their names, Russ Ruthie, United States Army Special Forces; Garth Easted, United States Army Special Forces; Ben Carter, United States Navy Special Ops. Great friends, great people, and they're missed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll get into the business part of the meeting. First up is Resolution 25-0220.
Approving the current payables, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 390348-390704, inclusive tolling $1,466,303.12, the county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts tolling $7,741,174.51. Adopted and regularly meeting Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 3, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0213.
It's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, approving the financing by the Redevelopment Authority of the County of Lackawanna of certain projects for the benefit of the Diocese of Scranton Catholic School System Incorporated, a Pennsylvania not-for-profit corporation serving the public. Whereas, the Redevelopment Authority of the County of Lackawanna is a public body corporate and politic, organized, and existing under the urban redevelopment law. And whereas, the Diocese of Scranton's Catholic School System Incorporated, a Pennsylvania not-for-profit corporation, has requested the assistance of the authority in connection with a project consisting of, among things, financing, refinancing, and/or reimbursing the design, construction, renovation, expansion, equipping, and furnishing improvements, and the additions of existing facilities of the borrower. And whereas, the financing contingencies paying all or a portion of the cost and expenses of the issuance of the notes, and whereas, in order to finance the project, the borrower has requested the authority to issue one or more series of tax-exempt revenue notes in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,250,000, a portion of which shall be spent on costs of the project within the County of Lackawanna. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County as follows: In connection with the financing of the project by the authority, the Board hereby declares it to be desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the county and the area served by the borrower, to have the project provided by and financed through the authority within the county. The Board intends that this resolution shall constitute the approval by a government unit required by Section 147F of the Code, and the approval is granted hereby do not and shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of the principal of or interest on any obligations issued by the authority, including but not limited to the notes. Resolved and adopted on this third day of September 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is Attorney Brian Kuzlansky.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is our typical tax code required approval of tax-exempt financing deals. Wherever the projects are located, we need each municipality after the public hearing to approve this resolution, which is, once again, just a tax code requirement, no obligation on the county. Three of the facilities are in Lackawanna County, which is why we're here today. We also have four other municipalities that are passing the same resolution in connection with this project. Happy to answer any questions. These are relatively, I mean, they're big improvements for the schools, but there are roof repairs, groundwork, they're not new additions, they're just, some of the buildings are getting new windows. It's a lot of that type of work across their system.
Any questions for Attorney Kuzlansky? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0214.
This is approving the DCED Election Security Grant, whereas Lackawanna County is committed to administering fair and equitable elections within Lackawanna County, and Lackawanna County has submitted a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Governor's Center for Local Government Services through the Election Integrity Grant Program to be used specifically for expenses incurred in both the primary and general elections. And whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to this Election Integrity Grant Project. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby approve and ratify the submission of this application to the Election Integrity Grant Program, adopted and regularly meeting Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 3, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Elections, Ms. Beth Hopkins.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Act 88 was passed in 2022 establishing the Election Integrity Grant Program. This is the fourth Election Integrity Grant that we're applying for and that we've already received, so we're going to ratify this today. The current grant will cover the November 4, 2025 municipal election, and the primary election, May 19, 2026. The amount of the grant is $762,964.19. These funds will continue to assist the election office to execute safe, fair, and efficient elections in Lackawanna County. Some of the funding will cover payment of staff needed for the canvassing and precanvassing of the mail-in ballots and absentee ballots, security, post-election procedures, printing of ballots, training of election officials, payment of the election staff on Election Day at all the polling places. So this is much-needed funding, and will provide much-needed relief too. Our budget, elections are very expensive to run, as you know. And I'd also like to thank our grant manager in the county, Sandy Obshinsky, who was very instrumental in helping with the application process and the reporting process for this grant each year.
Any questions for Director Hopkins? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, on the question, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our Director of Elections, Beth Hopkins, and her staff for doing a great, great job. I've been a Commissioner now for almost two years, and it's clear to me, and even talking with officials in the state, that we do have one of the best, most efficiently-run elections departments in the whole entire state of Pennsylvania. By accepting this grant today, it's another crucial investment in the democratic process in Lackawanna County. These federal funds, as Director Hopkins mentioned, will strengthen our ability to run elections that are secure, transparent, and accessible, covering everything from staffing and training, to physical security, ballot printing, and voter registration administration. Here in the county, and especially in the context of the chaos going on nationally in terms of elections, we are reaffirming our commitment to impartial, fair elections grounded in fact, not fear. This grant is more than just a financial boost, it's our pledge that we will stand against politicization and conspiracy, and we will ensure that every citizen, whether you're voting by mail or voting in person, can participate in a process that they can trust. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0216.
This is approving an agreement for the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into an agreement with the Educational Data Systems Incorporated for the administration and operation of the Lackawanna County Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Grant to commence July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027. Adopted and regularly meeting Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 3, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Workforce Development Executive Director, Ms. Virginia Toronto.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. This is an extension agreement that was awarded, originally awarded to Educational Data Systems, Inc., or EDSI, under the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act for the provision of employment and training services to economically disadvantaged adults and dislocated workers for the period that ended in June. This contract will allow for the extension for the next two-year period. The original contract contained a clause that allowed for the extension if the Board attained all of our Commonwealth of Pennsylvania mandated performance measures over the course of the last two years. We did indeed attain and exceed in most of our categories, and the agreement, the extension agreement was approved by the Workforce Development Board for extension at their June quarterly meeting.
Any questions for Director Toronto? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0217.
Entering into agreement, Arbor Employment and Training, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into an agreement with Arbor ENT LLC, Equus Workforce Solutions, for the administration and operation of the Lackawanna County Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Grant to commence July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027. Adopted and regularly meeting Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 3, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here once again is the Executive Director, Ms. Toronto.
This again is an extension agreement that was of a contract that was awarded two years ago, this one to Equus Workforce Solutions for the provision of employment and training services to youth within Lackawanna County ages 14 to 24 years of age. We did again, this was based on the attainment of all of our performance indicators, we did attain all of our indicators over the past two years, and the Workforce Development Board approved the extension at their June meeting.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0218.
This is entering into an agreement with Educational Data Systems Incorporated. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into an agreement with Educational Data Systems Incorporated for the administration and operation of the Employment Advancement and Retention Network Project, providing career and employment services to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services customers to commence July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027. Adopted and regularly meeting Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 3, 2025. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Toronto.
Once again, an extension agreement. This is under the, our Employment Advancement and Retention Network. This is a grant that helps individuals who are receiving public assistance or food stamps to receive career and training assistance to move off the welfare rolls. Over the past two years, we did attain all of our Commonwealth set employment and training mandated performance measures, and this was also approved by the Board.
Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Resolution 25-0219.
This is entering into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services and the Domestic Relations Section of the Court of Common Pleas. It's a five-year agreement, it takes effect October 1, 2025. Adopted and regularly meeting Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 3, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Domestic Relations, Ms. Kathy Hardaway.
Good morning. The purpose of this agreement is to maintain and improve the effectiveness of the Title 4D Child Support Program and to ensure optimum results in securing financial and medical support for the children of Lackawanna County. This is accomplished through the location of noncustodial parents, the establishment of paternity, the determination of a parent's ability to pay child support and provide health insurance, the establishment and enforcement of support orders, and the provision of sufficient staff and resources to ensure that the functions are properly, efficiently, and effectively carried out in the Lackawanna County Domestic Relations Office. There was a work group that prepared this agreement with representatives from the Bureau of Child Support, the Court of Common Pleas, the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts, the Pennsylvania Domestic Relations Association of Pennsylvania, and last but not least, the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. This group began discussions in June 2024 and completed its work on the final draft in March 2025, and then sent it to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court for their approval. The agreement is negotiated for a five-year period, with the current agreement expiring this month, September 30, 2025. The agreement before you today for your approval will cover the period October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2030. There were no major changes to the agreement. There were operational changes as to updated language with regard to changes in rules and child support guidelines, highlighted security requirements, updated language concerning record retention, and clarified language for cash handling.
Very good. Any questions for Director Hardaway? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Virginia, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you before, could you come back up? Do you want to give a plug to the Workforce Day tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
We'd like to invite everybody, and please, no rain, but...
Yes, I just thought of it as I was looking at the schedule.
Yes.
Do you just want to tell everybody what it is?
Okay, every year, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania wants to make everybody aware of what happens at the PA Career Link Center. I don't know if everybody even here knows that the PA Career Link Lackawanna County is located at 135 Franklin Avenue in downtown Scranton. We provide career and employment and training services to adults and dislocated workers that need, and youth that need help getting back into the workforce if they've been dislocated, or they lost their jobs, or for some reason they have never worked and they need help doing a resume, job searching. We have staff at the Career Link that provides these services. Once a year, the Commonwealth, and there are 22 workforce areas across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approximately 60 PA Career Links across the Commonwealth. Every year, the state would like us to promote what we do in our activities so that the community understands what is happening in the little building down on 135 Franklin Avenue. Tomorrow is our PA Career Link Awareness Day here in Lackawanna County. We are having a job, an outdoor job fair in our back parking lot. We would like to have everybody attend. We're hoping to have a very good turnout. We've been promoting it for the last month. Let's hope it doesn't rain. We do have tents in case, and there will be a food truck there, we will have a radio station there. And then inside the building, we're doing workshops on career awareness, digital literacy, how to apply for digital literacy classes. That also happens within that building. You know, youth services and how youngsters can come in with their parents and get youth services. It's a wide array of activities that we need to promote because I don't think the public knows it's there.
Absolutely. And how long have you been with Workforce Development?
Really?
I want to give you a point.
I know you're doing this on purpose. I started my 50th year.
How about a hand?
I made my 50th. But you just gave away my age.
No, I didn't mean to do that.
Yeah, you did.
But when I was saying we have the best elections director and staff in the state, we also, honest to God, have the best workforce development staff, and you lead that effort. And so if anyone has any questions, she literally is the person to go to, and thanks for all your work.
And I'd love to answer questions because we need to promote it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Resolution 25-0221.
This is entering into a postage lease agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a lease agreement with postage Pro Plus Doing Business as Quadient to replace the existing postage machine for the Department of Elections, Voter Registration, and Office Services. It's a five-year agreement at a cost of $769.84 a month. Adopted and regularly meeting Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 3, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Community Relations, Mr. Mark Cordelli.
Thank you, Chief. Morning, Commissioners. Yes, as Chief said, this is a five-year agreement that we're looking to get into to replacing the two main postage meter machines. The benefits, cost savings, and having a local business here that if, not if, when, but when, not if, but when, something happens that they're nearby can help us. So it is our recommendations to go with the more financially responsible one, which is Quadient End Door Postage Pro Plus.
Very good. Any questions for Director Cordelli? What happened to Notre Dame on Sunday? Do you want to explain? His brother used to coach for Notre Dame with Lou Holtz, so you can tell me later what you think happened. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0212.
This is our Appointments to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee. Nora Phillips, of South Abiquin Township, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2029. Stephen Long, MD of Moscow, term to begin immediately and to expire December 31, 2027. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners will hereby reappoint the following individuals. Patricia Hine of Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2028. And Sandra Longo of Stroop, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2028. Adopted and regularly meeting Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 3, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, on the question, I just want to thank all of the members of the Literacy Committee. I have to thank the previous administration, including Commissioner Turmac, for having the foresight to create this committee. They're doing really, really good work. When Virginia got up and talked about workforce, it's hard to get a job when you don't know how to read. We see people with severe literacy problems in our prison. We see them coming through our doors in terms of the Office of Youth and Family Services. So this committee is working feverishly to improve the literacy rates across the county, which is in turn going to help us throughout different departments. And I have this conversation with Bob Durkin, the head of the Chamber of Commerce, all the time. It's going to help them too, and it's going to help our workforce. So just want to thank Sandy Lamanna and all the board members who have done absolutely tremendous job in the work they've done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Okay, before we get to the opportunity for the public to address the Board, I know that our Controller, Gary DeBilio, just wanted to give a shout out to his deputy, Reggie Mariani, who recently retired after, I think, 30-plus years, if I'm not mistaken. So, Gary?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. I just wanted to take a minute to, at this time, to mention a retirement in my Controller's office. My long-term deputy, Reggie Mariani, is retiring after an exceptional 18-year career, serving the county taxpayers honorably, and he's actually been here a lot longer than I have. I congratulate him on his great work, saving money for the county through his work, and I've said he's like an encyclopedia as far as the information that he has. Now, because the search has, for an accountant as his replacement has not produced the right candidate just yet, I'm requesting some part-time hours for him until we find a replacement and then... and then some training through the end of the year, if possible. But hats off to Reggie on a great career and a well-earned retirement, and hopefully semi-retirement at this point. So thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now's the time for, the opportunity for the public to address the board. You'll have five minutes. Our Deputy Chief of Staff, Tracy Hart, is keeping the time, so when you come up to the podium, if you could just state your first and last name, and anyone who would like to come forward can do so now.
My name is Janet Breyer. I want to thank the Commissioners for coming today. This is great, and especially thank Mark Cordelli for keeping us well-informed all the time. It comes to our meetings all the time, and it's great. Lots of really good information. Also, Beth helps us all to do, especially because we have, what, five or six precincts here?
A lot.
Yeah. So anyway, the reason I wanted to talk to you guys today is I was at the panel discussion last night at Marywood regarding the data centers. And they, they talked about it being a community meeting. There was no one from our communities there. You know, no one from the affected communities, and I mean, they were there, they just were not able to speak. So we're also very, very concerned in Dunmore with Senate Bill 497 that would take away our ability to zone. So I was just wondering what your thoughts were. I mean, so far, they have, the data centers have not come to Dunmore. I'm an accountant. I don't know if they're good, bad, or indifferent. All I know is that I think it's being fast-tracked a little bit too quickly, and we, especially in Dunmore, but certainly in Lackawanna County, already have a pretty high pollution load, you know, due to having the largest landfill in the state located right here in Dunmore. So, I mean, it makes you skeptical of some of these things that seem to be moving at a very quick pace, and I am very, very worried about legislation that would take away our zoning. We just went through, I don't know, Mike, what was it, a 10-year process for SAPA. We're in, you know, we have nine municipalities. It's an ideal situation, and we adopted it two years ago for our zoning, and it doesn't address data centers. So my concern is that it's moving too quickly and that there isn't any community input, particularly in the affected communities. But when I say affected, it's going to affect all of us, just because it affects the grid, the electrical grid, and it affects, you know, our water supply. So I was just wondering what your thoughts were on some of that stuff.
So a few things. Number one, I totally oppose that Senate bill because I was a councilman in Scranton, and one of the most powerful things that you have as a local elected official is your zoning board and the fact that you can control what comes in and what comes out of your neighborhood. So I think that is outrageous that they would even consider that, number one. Number two, I think everyone's got to pump the brakes on these data centers. From my research on them, there's two major things people have to worry about. Number one, the consumption of electricity. So in other parts of the country, our utility rates are already very high here, and then that's one of the number-one complaints that I hear from people, is their PP&amp;L bill is outrageous. My fear is that the data centers come in, there's a number of construction jobs in the interim, which is great. Long-term, there's really not a ton of jobs connected to them, and then your utility bills could potentially skyrocket. The other thing I worry about is the consumption of water. So depending on what type of data center is built, it's my understanding that they use an awful lot of water, so I would be concerned about our water bills and our sewer bills skyrocketing as well. I also am paying close attention to what's happening in North Pocono and the Mid Valley, and I feel like the voices and the rights of the people really are being ignored. It's like the gold rush in San Francisco back in...
They're not even being heard.
Right.
I mean, they had a Senate panel yesterday, and they did not have anyone from any of these municipalities speak.
Right. And then a developer up in the Mid Valley essentially, you know, suggested that he would leave a dump on the property if he didn't get approval...
That was a threat.
...for the data center, right. So I think...
And again, like, we're used to being threatened here in Dunmore, so it doesn't sit well when you hear threats like that.
Anytime big business comes in and flashes a big check and says, "This is great," that should automatically cause people to take pause. So I have serious reservations about it.
And what can you do, I mean, as Commissioners? I don't even know, you know, what powers you have.
So we have, our planning department will serve in an advisory role. And Don, I don't know if you want to shed any light on that, but I don't believe that we have any, there's really no teeth to that.
Yeah, really, it's a local zoning issue. The county really has no authority over that.
That's what we thought.
Yeah, we don't have any, yeah, there's no legislation in acting in the authority with the county.
But I do think that where we can be effective is to continue to speak out and to support the communities throughout Lackawanna County, who quite frankly are being trampled over right now, so that, you know, these...
Yeah, it's pretty scary. It's reminiscent of past corporations that took, take advantage of us. But thanks for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir?
Mike Genetta, Scott Township. I'd like to address the issue of the vacant county commissioner seat. The people are really tired of all of the lawsuits and the appeals and this whole issue dragging on, and we need to have a special election and let the taxpayers, the people of this county, decide who the next commissioner should be for the next two years. You know, I, ever since Matt McGoyn left, I heard from everybody, they wanted a special election. They didn't like the court making the appointment. They didn't like any back-room deals. They thought there should be a special election. And I see where the Democratic Party is now going into court with another lawsuit, trying to stop a special election and take the right of the people away from deciding who the next commissioner should be. And the issue seems to be that, the legal issue seems to be that the Board of Elections doesn't have the authority to schedule a special election. Well, I think the Board of Commissioners has that authority, and I would like to see the Board of Commissioners, right here, right now, pass a motion authorizing a special election so that the voters of the township, or, excuse me, the voters of Lackawanna County, I'm so used to always referencing the township. But no, I think that you have the authority if you pass a resolution scheduling, or a motion scheduling, a special election. I think that makes the decision by the Board of Elections moot, and I think the special election goes forward, and the taxpayers, voters of the township would have, the township, I mean, the county, would have the final say on who gets the appointment or, you know, to fill out the remaining two years, and I'd like to see you do that today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Michelle Tierney, Glenburn Township. I agree with, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, Mike. It's time. We have, we, the people, have waited long enough. I think it's very important for us to understand what a special election means, what the timeframe is, and I think it's time for a special election. And Mrs. Hopkins is here. Could you share with the community what you shared with me in the event that if you choose to be a candidate running for this seat, what that means? Thank you.
So when a special election is called, each major political party gets to use a nomination certificate to put their candidate on the ballot, so it's a little bit of different paperwork. Anyone else who's interested in getting their name on the ballot would have to disaffiliate from one of the major political parties and switch their party to either independent, no affiliation, and then they would circulate what's called nomination papers. They are required to get 863 signatures. They can get those from any registered voter in the county regardless of their party affiliation. The reason the amount of signatures is 863, you take 2% of the last highest vote in a municipal election, and that was in 2023, and it was Coroner Tim Rollins, so it would be 2% of that highest vote, 41,000-something, I don't have that number off the top of my head right now. All that paperwork would be due in our office by 4:00 PM. On September 15th is the deadline to file that. If anybody has any further questions about it, they should contact our office. They can come down and talk to us in person. We're happy to give them the paperwork.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir?
Hi, Andrew Payne, Old Forge Borough. Want to talk with you about a proposed anti-discrimination ordinance countywide, similar to the ones in Dixon City and Scranton. And I want to talk about the necessity for that to be a countywide ordinance and not, you know, municipality by municipality, because when you do it municipality by municipality, it leads to a patchwork of different, you know, policies where, you know, you live right here, you're protected, you live half a block down, you're not. And a good case study of this is Snyder Avenue in Taylor Borough, where two houses that are right next to each other, 1254 Snyder and 1258 Snyder, they're next-door neighbors. One of them happens to live in the city of Scranton, the other in Taylor Borough. Now, I don't know about the Commissioners or anyone else here, but I personally don't think that, you know, you're, whether or not you have anti-discrimination protections should depend on what side of the street you happen to live on. So I'd love for the Commissioners to vote in favor of a broad-based anti-discrimination ordinance for Lackawanna County. Thank you.
Solicitor Frederickson is in the process of putting together a memo to Commissioner Termack and I, because he is currently doing research on the very point that you just brought up, because when we were down in Musick having our Commissioners' meeting, there were several people who stated what you had just said. So he hasn't issued that yet, but I believe that will be coming, his research on that will be coming soon, and then we'll be able to act on it, or not act on it.
Thank you, Ms. Schur.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Ma'am?
Hi, I was here about a month ago, also speaking about a nondiscrimination, extranation ordinance for Lackawanna County. My name is Alec Walker-Serrano. I live in Binghamton, New York, but I work and volunteer in Lackawanna County. I was born and raised here, and all of my family lives here. So I just wanted to share a little bit about a canvassing experience that I had last weekend. We went to Canvas, Knock Doors, and Taylor to talk to people about how they feel about a nondiscrimination ordinance, whether they think it's something that they need, and we had a bunch of in-depth conversations with many of our neighbors who indicated they definitely want this policy, and they personally need it because either they themselves are part of the LGBTQ community or part of their family is, and they've personally either experienced or witnessed somebody that they care about going through discrimination. I also spoke last time about friends who are having difficulty finding housing simply because they are transgender, and their name that they use in their everyday life doesn't match what's on their paperwork. It's not because they don't have enough money, it's not because they don't have a job, it has nothing to do with that, it's just the fact that they're a little bit different than you or I. So I really just want to be up here to speak for people who weren't able to be here today, several of the people whose doors we knocked on. It was the first time I was ever talking to them. I don't personally live in Taylor, but they indicated they would have liked to be here if they were able to, but they have other obligations. It's difficult to be at a 10:00 AM meeting. It's easy for myself because this is my job to represent and stand up for my community. So I also want to highlight, though, that we're not just talking about protecting LGBTQ folks, we're not just talking about protecting people based on things like their race or ethnicity or their disability, but also their housing status. I have friends, and I have myself personally experienced bouts of houselessness, and that has made it really difficult for myself and others to have a record of being housed. And then even if you have a job, even if you have the money to rent a place or buy a place simply because you haven't been housed, you don't have that record of being housed, you might be discriminated against, even if you have the ability to afford that place to live. So I want to make sure that our unhoused neighbors are also considered in this, especially in the context of Keystone Mission closing, of housing costs rising, more people than ever in the United States and in Pennsylvania are at risk of homelessness. So it's important for us to ensure that even those who are unhoused, those who are often forgotten, are included in this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Termack?
First, thank you, Dunmore, for hosting here today. Appreciate having us. Second, I would hope that everyone had a chance to get out to LaFest over the weekend. We had a great weekend, we had a great turnout, so it was a lot of fun. And our, my hats go off to our maintenance people who helped set things up, the things that we have to do as the county, providing electricity and everything for the stands and just everything that they do behind the scenes, so they did a great job. Our sheriffs were there to make sure everything stayed safe. They did a great job, so I want to thank them. We talked about having some of the best people. We do, so Virginia, Mickey, Kathy, I mean, Beth, we do. We have some of the great, the greatest people here working at the county, helping our jobs move a little smoother than sometimes they aren't, but appreciate all that you all do. So just want to say thanks, so, thank you.
Thank you. I do want to address the special election, and I'm going to address it at 12 o'clock today during our Election Board meeting. In a democracy, power belongs to the people, not the party bosses, not back-room deals, or a select few who think they know better than the voters. That's why I strongly support holding a special election. That's why last Friday, I voted with Judge Nealon to call for a special election for the vacancy for a county commissioner, and I'll do so again today for the Office of the Clerk of Judicial Records. Every resident of Lackawanna County deserves the right to choose who represents them, rather than having that decision made by a handful of political insiders. It is shameful that both the Democratic Party, our local Democratic Party, and members of the Republican Party are circling the wagons to block a special election. They'd rather protect their own power than trust the people that they claim to serve. That is not democracy. That is politics at its ugliest. We are elected to serve the public, not manipulate the system. So let's give the people of Lackawanna County what they are entitled to, a real vote, a fair process, which I've been calling for from the beginning when Matt McGoyn left, and a representative chosen by them, not chosen for them. I also wanted to just spend a minute talking about the finances of Lackawanna County. So last year, as everyone is well aware, I had to make some really difficult decisions that were neither easy nor popular, but those decisions were necessary steps to address the county's severe financial crisis and bring us back from the brink of absolute destruction. I said it then, and I'll say it again now, when you're in a hole, you have to stop digging to get yourself out of it. So we've made, I've made those difficult decisions, I've taken a lot of flak for it, but we had a meeting on Friday that gave a little bit of vindication to what I had to do last year. Commissioner Termack and I, along with the County Treasurer, our Chief of Staff, met with a representative from the Department of Community and Economic Development in, from the state of Pennsylvania, and our financial experts from PFM that Commissioner McGoyn and I and Commissioner Termack voted to hire last year to formulate a plan to get us out of this huge financial hole. $38 million in debt, $19 million in unpaid bills, and I could go on and on and on about the operational issues. They have begun, and they will publicly at the end of September, acknowledge our efforts, that they are working, and we are slowly but surely turning the county around financially and operationally. Now, there's a caveat to this. We are not out of the woods yet, and the legacy of past mismanagement will not disappear overnight, but both the state and PFM acknowledged to us on Friday that we have made and are making tremendous progress. As I said, they'll be coming into a public meeting towards the end of September to give their update, because since I took over as a county commissioner in January of 2024, everything that I've done has been public. Every single move that I've made has been out before the public to see all the numbers that I'm looking at, the budget, so on and so forth. If you remember, in the beginning of 2024, we immediately had a press conference and said, "We have a big problem here." I was sounding the alarm bell, telling everybody that there was a train coming down the tracks about to run everybody over. But I want to report to the people of Dunmore today and the people of Lackawanna County who may be watching, that what we, what the plan that I put together and what I said last year... last year is finally coming to fruition. It's going to take time, but we have a five-year plan, and we're following that plan. So the only thing I would ask is that I hope that the public continues to trust the process that we have put forward. I understand not every decision I've made here in the last year and a half has been correct. I don't know everything, but every single day, I'm doing the best I can to make sure that we never, ever, ever have to experience what we did last year. I should say the taxpayers never had to experience what we did, had to do last year, and that we could get this county to a point where everybody's hair is not on fire and we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. So I think we're going to be in a pretty good position. And with that, I also wanted to announce that the Lackawanna County Parks and Recreation Department will host the 31st Annual County Commissioners Cross Country Invitational this Saturday, September 6th, at McDade Park, at 8:00 AM, or, I'm sorry, an 8:00 AM tour of the course will start today with an award ceremony expected at around 12:45 in the afternoon. And we wish all the student athletes the best of luck for a good race day. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 17th, at 10:00 AM in the County's Government Center, 5th floor, 123 Wyoming Avenue in Scranton. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.